All right. Good evening, everyone. I call this regularly scheduled February 14th, 2023, meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. We will now take a moment for silent prayer or meditation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Heng. Please rise.
Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Joanne, roll call, please.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Heng?
Here.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Here.
Here.
Sorry. Commissioner Sarah's not yet in. Chair Lewis?
Present.
All right. Moving on, we have approval of minutes. Tonight, we have two sets of minutes. The first is from the regularly, the regular Planning Commission, held on December 13th, 2022, second being from January 24th, 2023. Does anyone have any changes to the, to either set of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved as submitted. Moving on to oral communications. Now is the time for anyone who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. Anyone? Seeing none, we will move forward. We're going to skip a couple items on the agenda here momentarily. We're going to skip to item five on the agenda, Art in Public Places, number 22-01. Joanne, who will read the staff report?
Chair Lewis, I will present the staff report.
Okay, very well.
Good eve, good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission. At the November 22nd Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission approved the aerial sculpture designed for the Medical Office Building at the Queen of the Valley Hospital and provided design suggestions for the mural. The mural would be located on the west wall of the Medical Office Building and would wrap around the north. The artist for the mural is Mr. Nate Frizzell. He has designed murals throughout the United States and also internationally. Here is the proposed design for the mural. The design of the mural reflects the Planning Commission's, Planning Commissioners' direction at the November meeting. It depicts, it depicts West Covina historical figures with Ellen Beach Yaw right along here, next to the city's first mayor, Mayor Maxson, Sister Columba shaking hands with a doctor, and next to the doctor is a nurse and a young girl looking at a house finch. Behind them at the background is the, are clouds that would provide the connection to, to the figures. On the side of the, on the side wall, there would be the centennial design. The artist provided several, the artist provided several options for the centennial design. Staff is recommending the first option, which, which is the 100-year logo with, with the, the paintings of the oranges. And here is other examples or other design options for the centennial design. Here are the colored renderings. The tree along, in front of the wall will be removed and relocated elsewhere so that the design in the mural would be visible. The, the mural would be painted with graffiti and weather-resistant coating so that it'll be, it'll, it'll remain in good condition. With that, it is recommended that the Planning Commission approve the concept design for the mural. If the Planning Commission has any questions, staff is available to answer. The Queen of the Valley or Eminence Representative is also here, available to answer any of the Planning Commission's questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Gutierrez?
Who is the girl on the left?
The girl on the left is Mark Ellen.
Okay. Right.
Any other questions?
And then would this process eventually go back to the City Council for final approval, or how does it work?
No, it would just, it would just be Planning Commission, Planning Commission's approval.
Okay. I mean, I would like to see something less, having, I don't know, personally, I don't think we should put the first mayor on there. I think something more inspiring. I'm not saying he was an inspiration, I'm just saying in general, I think, I would like to see something else besides the first mayor.
Or maybe even the patient, maybe, maybe the hospital has a patient, I mean, well, maybe, I mean, there's a miracle patient you guys have treated at the hospital that you guys believe that is deserving to go on this mural, something that maybe Imanti has done to make a difference in, in the lives of someone else. That's just a personal
opinion.
The woman in the middle is one of the founders.
That one, I understand, yeah, that one, especially when it used to be a Catholic hospital, so that, me personally, I, I mean, I liked the nun, but, but I think, maybe there's something else besides the mayor, the first mayor of our city could go there?
As I was saying, I did speak to the Historical Society, and their number one choice was the mayor. Number two choice was Josiah Hurst. And then there were other people involved, but that's, and then we went to Mark Ellen, which we thought would be just a nice depiction for the mural as well. So would you prefer to see, I mean, Josiah Hurst there instead, or? This was on the recommendation of the, of the West Covina Historical Society.
I'll throw in my two cents on it. I, I don't have any problem with, with the individuals included in the, the proposal. I just think the, the background leaves something to be desired, frankly. It's, it's very, I don't know, how else to, how else to put it. It's just, it doesn't represent anything about West Covina.
Looks kind of busy, too.
Yeah, and I know as an artist, per person costs is money, so, I mean, if we're able to save money by eliminating the mayor and, and broadening the background, I think that's a better option.
I would like to have, we do want to have some representation, though, of the history, of the 100-year history of-
I completely agree.
-West Covina. And I think that we should have somebody, at least a couple of people represented there.
Let's see.
As far as the background goes, there's no, I mean, cost is not an issue because this is multi-phase, I mean, so.
Is there a resident up there that has contributed to West Covina, to the community?
Mark Ellen?
Huh?
Mark Ellen? On the far left is Mark Ellen.
Her name is, Mark Ellen is her nickname.
Correct, because she was a professional singer.
Ellen Beach Yaw.
Yep.
Yeah, I was thinking like maybe, I don't, I don't know, the, the difference is like, for example, this is a, one of the first signs for West Covina Plaza Shopping Center, maybe, maybe, maybe a background, also a picture of Hurst Ranch, I mean, some, some of the historic, historic history of West Covina.
We did consider that, and the reason we decided to go with the people in the history rather than West Covina is for the aesthetics, the aesthetic of the mural. We're, you know, like you have the May Company, which was like one of the first major malls in the country, but don't know if the May Company would look good in a mural, or something like in, oh, there are some beautiful buildings in West Covina, there really aren't, they're not, it's only 100-year history, there aren't many historical building. And that's why we decided to go with the, the people in history rather than-
When I see how this drawing is going to go on a beautiful side of this new state-of-the-art building, I wish we had an opportunity to even widen the perspective of input from our community, like maybe even from our local schools, getting our local students' ideas on, on what could go there. What's the, what's the crunch time when you're having a decision on something like this?
In, in April.
End of April, okay.
For them to see-
Realistically, okay.
...of occupancy.
If, I mean, just an idea in general, I think, I would love to have a chance to bring this back at our next upcoming meeting, and between that time, have city staff broaden input from local schools, our local schools in our district, and also I know, and maybe from our councilwoman, Letty Lopez Viado, who has a arts program too, to get other input from our community, especially from our local schools, because I know there may be, maybe a historic teacher that we don't know about, or something else that we're missing. And I think that we need to get a little more input, especially when it's going on a beautiful, a beautiful building like it's being built, and, and especially when it's given, it's being given a tremendous amount of prospect and imagery when patients are going to go to this hospital. And it's going to be brightened up, I'm assuming, right? It'll be, it'll be lit in up and everything?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I do have, as I said, I did research with the, I got this, the history.
Okay.
Community. And with that, we had a list, and I did go to the-
I'm sorry to interrupt, but can we go back to the beginning when you were first trying to tell us how you came about with this mirror? So can you tell us a little stories where the background comes from and what concept this starts, so we can all, you know, know about it? So, Brian, could, could we let him?
The wall's in two sections, by the way. Is it possible to, fast forward, you see, that's one side, and then it takes a corner around to the other. Once again, those trees will be removed, and then, yeah, 100 right there. For the 100, what I would suggest, there are a few different, there are a few different options there. What I really like is if you take a look here, is a picture, this is an archival picture of Hurst Ranch. And I think this, the reason I'll have it in there, there is another one that's close to this. The artist can paint this in color and add color to it and put that in the, in the 100. That would get tribute to Hurst Ranch within 100 right there. So I would recommend, that's, we would recommend, we'd go in the pattern, the visuals inside of 100. As far as the main wall goes, for the main wall, we have historical figures in sepia tones and in modern color. The clouds in the background serve a few purposes. They are made, made up of the colors of the chosen palette and also mix well with the figures, making them flow together nicely, and they allow connection for the birds to fly through. The birds are house finches. They are natives to the area and thought to be a guide to the world beyond. Native American regards them as a nomen of joy. In the center, Sister Columba shakes hands with the doctor, a kind of passing of the torch. Behind her, West Covina first mayor stands proudly. He wears a pin that says Maxim for Mayor, which we could or could not include. For good measure, behind him stands Ellen Beach Yaw, Mark Ellen, in her element, with the birds perched on her hand. There was a photo of her that the artist liked. He would, was loosely, she was loosely wrapped in flowers, and he added something similar with zinnias. So the zinnias, by the way, in the history of West Covina was, West Covina was known as the Zinnia Center. They, they had, they grew and exported the most zinnias, I believe, almost anywhere in the world. Next to the doctor is an Asian nurse in her hand on the shoulder of a young Hispanic girl wearing a West Covina t-shirt. She looks happy, and another finch flying through the air, connecting to the mural or, and both. Since the side wall is not flat, that would be the one with the 100 on it, and obstructed, we thought it better to utilize it for a centennial design while focusing the bulk of the painting with a larger, flat wall. We would have, the tree, the trees will be removed, and in fact, they already have been removed. And, let me see, horse and short wall, this could even more, sort of over time, yeah. And that's pretty much it. I do, once again, I, I sit the historical people out of memory. If you would like, I do have a list, I could go through my, my file and find the, the list that the Historical Society gave me for other historical people. And, but as I was saying, they suggested that the first, that the, their first on the list was the mayor, second was, was something regarding Hurst Ranch and so on. But I have a few more in there if you want me to get those as far as-
How about the first teacher of West Covina Unified School District?
I don't care for those clouds, sorry. They look like morning fire.
Which one?
The clouds.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They have like the old Eastland-
I would like to see like-
-mall, but that old Eastland tower they had along the freeway, that's a good one. Also, there's the, Mark Ellen is, I mean, the, the palm trees that line Mark Ellen are really a beautiful part of West Covina.
Well, even like a aerial view, like if you're standing on top of the Branca Tower Building, you see, you see the two malls and the freeway, but, yeah. Is it possible to put the city logo in the middle, zero?
I don't see why not.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm sure.
But I think you, you were mentioning that you were going to add some landscaping about West Covina landscaping on the building of the 100.
If you look inside the 100, there, right where you see the oranges are, if you go, if you would go to another one of those.
Oh, and the sigh.
Right, we can do different things. If you go up, if you go up one more there, that would be more representation of, like the upper one, or actually more or less lower one, but that's a more modern picture. That would be the view, only an archival view of what that looked like 100 years ago, within the 100. And then, if you'd like, we can put the logo in the middle, if you prefer, move the logo to the, the West Covina logo to the middle. So are we okay with the 100 part going that, going with that wall, with the 100 there, if we make those changes?
The 100 out of the building looks pretty empty on the building itself, just with the 100.
If you take a look at the way, at the rendering, the way that's set up, the wall is staggered, so creates more interest, with the wall being staggered like that. You can see.
And as long as it's brightened up and lit in up and maintained, it'll look, it'll look beautiful.
Those, those are no longer there.
Yeah, it'll look beautiful.
I don't know, it would kind of look cool if you had like a picture of West Covina, the same scenery, West Covina 100 years ago, and then West Covina today, same. And I don't know how that would work in with something like that on those walls. I mean, is everybody put them with the 100, or?
To me, it's because of budget constraints, right?
Pardon?
I'm assuming that wall, you put 100 because of obviously budget constraints?
No, the, the budget constraints are really not an issue.
Oh, so that means you could, you could put more paintings there?
Because we can take from Phase Two to-
Okay.
-put more into, to this Phase One.
Okay.
That's, that's not, that's not an issue.
Okay.
But if the wall is not level, it's-
In that case.
-the reason, is the reason we put the 100 there.
But I think what she was referring to was more of a, maybe 100 years ago's landscape of West Covina, and then 100 on top of that, I mean, on top of the-
Reversing it, I see what you're saying.
Right, like the same-
In other words, doing something, so this would be, can I pass this picture, I mean, you folks here?
Yes.
Let me do this. We have one, one, two, three. For some reason, this is the same picture, by the way. Just came out that way. Well, it was, my suggestion was it goes within the numbers, but now we just had a suggestion that it goes-
And, and would this be color or black and white like this?
It would be, we would, the only picture available is in black and white.
Certainly.
The artist would make it in color.
Got it.
Would add color.
Okay.
Is that the same picture?
I think we, I think we all have the same pictures.
Yeah, sorry, the, sorry about that printing there, I didn't even notice. I just printed it out real quick and grabbed it. It's the same picture on the top and the bottom, so.
And, and this would be, this would be sort of, I guess, in the numbers? Is that, is that what your-
That would be my suggestion.
Proposal is, okay.
If you could go to that, right over there.
Okay.
You know it is, the numbers over there?
Yeah, understood.
The thing is, that's a modern picture of West Covina right there, but what we do is put the 100-year-old picture there, in color. It would be, the color would be added by the artist.
I mean, I would think like a square with a line in the middle, 100 years, and then right here, 100 years, is it 23, 18, 1923, and then down here, 2023, so like be, you understand, like divided by the 100?
So there would be three different numbers. There would be 100, there would be-
No, I would, I would just get rid of the other two and put something else there. You know, 100 years of excellence, and then on the other one, put, I don't know, residents, something, something for the residents, I don't know.
Okay, right, I mean, we wanted to celebrate, we, we wanted to celebrate the 100-year anniversary-
Right.
-with this, but-
So are these-
And more, but in an artistic way, more than like a billboard.
Are they permanent, though? They're going to be there forever, right?
This is permanent, yes, yeah, yeah. So, I'm sorry-
I guess, can we paint these pictures and then put 100 on top of it, on that building?
It's going to be, that's going to be interesting, how we could do that, because as I'm saying, the wall is staggered. That particular, the shorter wall, while as you can see, is not level. So I don't know, that's why, that's why we decided to put the 100 like that, which really takes care of that. Now, if you're going to put that as in the background, it might be more difficult to pull off, because as you come around, the view's going to change. Where with the 100, each one is an individual aspect, and, you know, so. It's, can you see how that, the wall is staggered, correct?
Yes, yes.
So that's why, and it just went along. Three, it's like three little wa, three different walls, and 100 is three numbers, so it just seemed to flow naturally.
All right, any other questions? Any, any, thank you for now, and then if, if we have any further questions, I'll gladly call you right back up.
I would like to take, be able-
Sure, go ahead.
I would like to take something back to my creative team.
Sure, absolutely.
Saying what, what we're going, what the input was. And what I have is that, with starting, is the 100 wall, is that going to be okay if we insert?
Well, let's, let's, let's have commission discussion on that, and then obviously, we'll solicit your input at that point in time, just to see if it's feasible. Let's see if we have some consensus.
Okay.
Okay.
Fight it out, tell you.
Okay. I think that's a, I think that's a fair representation. All right.
Stay here.
You, you can hang out there, that's fine. All right. So I'll open it up for any discussion?
Yeah, I would just say that I would like to see, maybe the, the picture of the clouds, which I'm assuming represents a, or to me, represents heaven, but maybe instead of that, we could put that landscaping back there of the, of the landscaping that he showed us over here in color. And then for inspirational figures, to make, make sure that there's no political aspect to this wall, I would say take out the mayor, because we always want a hospital to be welcoming for, for all cultures and all lives they serve. And, and obviously, the, the nun is there, obviously because of the history and, and long-term hospital. It has been for, it has been a long-term Catholic hospital for many years before Imanti purchased it. And so I think the other individuals in the picture represent a perfect reflection of our city. I'll just say that if we could come to some sort of consensus and to maybe the first teacher of, that was, who served the city of West Covina, or something else that this body thinks of, something else that could go there as inspiring and hopeful, when someone's going to go get medical care, they can look at that wall and say, that's, that's, this wall inspires me, and then hopefully I could get better, or become wow again. That's just my comments.
Any other discussion?
In two days, we're celebrating 100-year anniversary, and we invited the granddaughter Maxwell, the mayor, great-granddaughter, I think, but I forgot. I think it's the great-granddaughters, but, is it great? Sorry. So, with the mayor there, the first West Covina mayor, it seems representations of West Covina, since, you know, political or not, he, they, or he represents forming a city for West Covina. So I guess I'm okay with that.
So can you tell me some of the accomplishments that Mayor did for our city? Because I don't know. So maybe you could tell me, what, what accomplishments did he do to get on that wall?
It's not so much of accomplishments, but also, also being able to form a city and being able to, you know, get the people together 100 years ago. I mean, I've, I've heard West Covina used to be a dump of sewer for Covina. But anyway, the history of West Covina has been long, and, and I don't know the full story of it, but obviously, since he was the first mayor, and even to today, we're celebrating in two days, or even go out of our ways to invited the great-granddaughters to be a part of the celebrations. So I think this is a good thing.
When was, when the BKK landfill shut down?
1978.
Oh, it was all asking city staff, they knew.
Yeah.
And who was the mayor at that time? Was he instrumental in dismantling that, that BKK landfill? Maybe he should be on there. I don't know who the mayor was, but-
Well, obviously, there's a lot of mayors, every-
Like-
Mayor who shut it down?
Yeah, exactly. So I would like to leave that open to the community, actually. I mean, I'm not saying who should go there. The mayor doesn't deserve to be on there. I'm just saying, I would like to see this as a non-political wall, which means a non-elected official being, people being on there. Having elected officials makes it political to an extent. So I will, I would like to see a non-political wall.
Political or not, right?
And I understand the Historic Society has, I mean, they have very, various views and how they view stuff, so, and in the past, they have engaged in political activity, but that's a different story. So I, I'm just saying that I would love to see input from the art community, to see who, who they nominate to be on that wall.
I just wanted to say something. The last time that the gentleman was here, talking with us about the murals and about the two locations that they had, we did ask him to touch bases and speak with West Covina- with West Covina Historical Society, um, he did meet with them, and it is a good thing to have a historical society for the city in order to catalog the different, I guess, glass negatives that they may have had of the community and so forth, and documentation. Um, again, since the artist we've selected is a very talented artist, and at some point, we want to allow the artist to be able to use the space. As the gentleman is explaining, the one section of the building is flat, and that's why they wanted to pay considerable amount of attention to that area, because it's a lot of area to make a statement about the community, and he is correct, rather than focusing on how the city may have looked a hundred years ago, it's a hospital, what's their main care? To take care of people. And what they were trying to do was to span different people with different backgrounds coming to this hospital and being cared for, and I think the artist was wanting to, again, try to incorporate people who may have had contributions to the city. When it comes to the other section of the building, what he's explaining is, the way that it's laid out, it has different levels. And so that being the case, that's why they focused on one hundred, because since it's different areas physically, it was easier for them to take each number and then try to incorporate, um, some type of landscaping, in the case which they were speaking of, the orange trees, the walnut trees, um, in other areas showing the landscaping of the community, either back a hundred years ago or currently. So I have to admit, I'm not an artist, but the artists that the city has retained, we're also relying on his, on their expertise to suggest what may work, because again, that is a, gonna be a very large area, and we do want it to give a unique statement, where whenever people come there to the visit, they know that it's the city of West Covina, and that we offer many things.
So I'll, I'll, uh, add my two cents here, um, so, as, as it stands, with, with regard to the, the mural, the representation of people in our community, I, I think that the artist does a, a fine job of, of addressing that, I, I think my biggest hang-up on this whole thing is just going to be the background, I think the background is, is is, is unrepresentative of the city, I mean, you know, the, the sky is, you know, not necessarily unique here, so I, I would say, you know, add something that is, that is scenic to, to our community, whether it be, uh, whether it be a building, whether it be, um, whether it be Hurst, Hurst Ranch, whether it be, you know, the hills in the background, the, the, the view of the mountains, something like that, uh, the, the palm trees on Lark Island, anything along those lines, I, I, I think would, I think would be potentially appropriate here, and I don't want to micromanage the artist, that's the last thing I, I would like to do. I'd like to see something, however, that is more representative of the city. With regard to the one hundred, I understand what you're trying to do, I don't have any problem with it, I think the, I, I think the main thing there is, you know, maybe, um, you know, I'm, I'm okay with the, with the oranges, but I could, I, I can also see, um, how, how placing the photograph that you provided to us in there would, would look just as well. So I, I would be in favor of that as well.
I think that that'd be a great idea, and when people, actually when they're sick and they go to the hospital, they're not gonna notice that, because they're sick, but we will see it, we'll, we'll recognize it, but one thing they might see is if it has something encouraging, maybe hope brings healing when you believe, something like that, you know, they'll see it as they're walking in, and maybe, I know we can't put anything religious, we don't want to
Represented in, in
You know, how about a firefighter, a police officer, public service? We don't believe in that here, no, okay. Oh, okay.
I think it's fine, I mean, where I would think something like that, like hope brings healing when
Yeah, I would like to see more people on there then. I'd like to see a teacher on there. Um, I would like to see maybe a paramedic on there.
Please keep, uh, keep in mind, it's not only the artist, is, uh, I represent a company, and we had, uh, a creative team work with the artist, and we have done several public, uh, art projects, so it's not, it's the combination of the artist and the creative team that, that put this together aesthetically, and as far as the way it lays out, the amount of people that are on there really is aesthetically works, works nicely, um.
And just so you know, the Historic Society has engaged, and many of their donors donate to independent PACs that, uh, are very politically engaged in elections to, uh, some of them spread misinformation to the voters, so, uh, some of their largest donors and founders are, are big donors in the political arena, so, that's why I'm saying, uh, and that's why I was recommending last night, to have your independent, uh, you could get in, get input from everyone, but at the end of the day, uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I don't want to see a political wall, but obviously, that's for the story, but
So I, I just have a question for you, um, with, with regard to what I had just proposed, with regard to, um, changing the background out with regard to the, the cloud, sky scenery, to, to something that's more, um, West Covina-centric, um, as well as potentially adding, uh, this into the background for the, for the one hundred as proposed, is that something that you think is feasible?
Yes, uh, I think, so, I understand, replace the clouds with something that is more West Covina.
Correct.
Then once we do that, if we use in the background, the Hurst Ranch in the background, I like the idea then of the hundred showing the oranges like you can see right here, because then Hurst Ranch will be represented in the mural, and then you also have the recognizable oranges in the one hundred.
That sounds good to me, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we, uh, that we recommend that the artist go back and, uh, and, and change out the background of the primary mural with, with all of the representatives um, of, of the city on there, um, to something that is, that is more scenic to West Covina, whether that be buildings, uh, scenery, what have you, I, I, I think we can leave that up to the artist, and then with regard to the one hundred, I think, I, I think we, we agreed that this was, that we would potentially include this in the background, or potentially the, the one hundred year anniversary logo style.
Well, as I was saying, if we use the background, that as the background instead of the clouds,
Okay.
And we would not put it in the one hundred,
Okay.
In one hundred, we would do something like the oranges that are there, right now, as you can see, it would correspond with that year hundred, uh, anniversary logo.
So I, I, I'm in favor of the one hundred year anniversary as, as is that way, or with the, with the, uh, the, the background that, that you were showing, or the backgrounds that you had provided previously. I, any of those works, I think just fundamentally, the main mural is, is where I take exception, so to speak, and so I would, I would have the, the, I would request that the artist go back and, and, uh, make it more West Covina-centric in that
Choice would be A or B?
Yes.
Hurst Ranch or the palm trees?
Is, is there
That are like
Is there, is there a means by which you could present those both to us, and then we can choose?
I will see.
Okay, all right, okay, then I will go ahead and amend my motion to, to, to adopt that, that recommendation as, as, uh, Mr. Kohler spelled out, and then, um, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, I'll say, roll, roll call, uh, Joanne?
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang? Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
I'll just make a comment before I vote, and the comment is, uh, I cannot vote on something if I don't know the, the voting record of that person, so if my colleagues choose to be blind about it and not care about person's voting record on what they voted for as mayor when he was mayor, then I will, uh, say that, that the community should have input on who should go on that wall, but, so I will abstain from voting.
Chair Lewis?
Aye. All right, motion passes four zero one, moving on to, uh, item number two, we're gonna go back on the on the agenda, uh, to conditional use permit number twenty-two dash zero six, yes?
Sorry, just one thing, so, right, what we're doing is, the background, and the background will
Correct.
Two choices for the background.
Yes. I thi- I think you're getting heads, heads that are nodding in agreement on that, so, yes, all right, thank you. All right, back to, back to item number two, um, public hearing. Joanne, who will read the staff report?
Planning aide Martin Burrowspeas is gonna be presenting the staff report.
Good evening, commissioners, this is item number two, conditional use permit number twenty-two dash oh six, located at one fifty North Grand Avenue, Suite one three two, also known as Kumon. So, this conditional use permit, um, number twenty-two dash oh six, is to allow the use of a tutoring center. The unit space is one thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet, it's zoned under Neighborhood Commercial, and it's located at the Grand Creek Shopping Center, um, and it's surrounded by single-family residential and multifamily residential. Here is the existing site. Here is the site plan, um, and red is the subject site. Here's the floor, the floor plan, red arrow showing the entrance. Highlighted in red is the study area, which also has seating for parents, and pur- in purple is the restroom. So this tutoring center, um, includes activities such as math, reading, uh, for students ages three, uh, to high school, with, um, each session lasting about thirty minutes, it consists of one full-time staff and six full-time, um, part-time, uh, employees. Um, average of twenty students with maximum of thirty-five students per classroom. The business hours are Monday through Friday from eleven AM to seven PM. Planning staff recommends adopting resolution number twenty-three dash six one one nine, approving conditional use permit twenty-two oh six. Uh, I am available for any questions, and so is the applicant.
Does anyone on the commission have a question for staff at this juncture? Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, I do have a couple of speaker cards, um, but first, we will hear from the applicant, please come forward.
Hi.
Hi, do we, do we have a speaker card from you?
No.
Okay, can you please just state your name?
Yeah, my name is Hanisha Desai.
Okay, welcome.
Okay.
Do you have anything to address with the commission?
Um, no, no, nothing to add to what was already, um, explained.
Okay.
Did you have any questions from
The only question I had, did you have a chance to read the conditions?
Um, the conditions?
The report, yes.
Yeah, I had a chance to go over, uh, the conditions, yeah.
Specifically with the one where staff was indicating that they were gonna monitor the parking?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I just want to be sure you had a chance to read the conditions.
And, um, just to also further explain, I'm currently operating in that plaza currently, in another space, and, um, this conditional use permit is simply to relocate where I'm currently located to the corner space. So, um, in terms of any parking patterns, um, that would continue to, um, be the same as it is right now. Okay.
Did you go through the CUP process for, for that?
Yes, yes, that was in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
What's, what's the size differential between your current unit compared to this one?
Um, this one is, um, a little bit larger, and also the, um, um, the shape of the space um, is a little bit different and more conducive to, um, um, classroom setting. Um, and also over, since I started, we are seeing an increase in interest and enrollments as well within the local community for math and reading support.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I do have two speaker cards, um, so we'll first hear testimony from those in favor. Uh, can I have Calvin Wong come forward, and then on deck will be, uh, Manhan So, and I hope I mispronounced that.
Chair Lewis, sorry to interrupt, that's, that's for the following item.
Oh, that's for the following, okay, for whatever reason, it's referencing the same, uh, it's ref- it's referencing the, uh, CUP uh, number for this item, in, in any case, all right, does anyone else, uh, wish to, uh, provide testimony in favor of this item? Anyone opposed? Neutral? All right, um, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it for commission discussion. Any discussion?
I had, I didn't have any further questions.
Okay, um, anyone for a motion?
Congratulations on doing well, do you need a larger space?
A motion to approve it?
We have a motion.
Second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hang, second by Commissioner Williams, Joanne, roll call, please.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez has stepped away, um, Chair Lewis?
Aye, motion passes four zero zero. All right, moving on to item number four. Administrative use permit number twenty-two, or excuse me, twenty-two dash zero eight, um, Joanne, who will read the staff report?
Assistant Planner Miriam Machado will present the staff report. I'm sorry, sorry, um, Assistant Planner Jerry Rivera will read the staff report, apologize for that.
Hello, good evening, commissioners, uh, this is item number three, this is conditional use permit number twenty-two dash zero eight, for Code Ninjas Tutoring Center. To give a little bit of background, the subject site is a red rectangle, uh, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the use of a tutoring center, the location is zoned as Neighborhood Commercial, the location is on the corner of South Azusa Avenue and East Aroma Drive, which is in the South Hills Shopping Center. Surrounding zoning uses are single-family residential and multifamily residential, and the overall lot size is a little over nine acres. Moving forward, this is the existing site, the tutoring center will be on the first floor. Moving forward, this is their site plan, the business location is indicated by the yellow rectangle. Moving on to the proposed floor plan, so, um, the red arrow is the front door, the yellow indicates the staff resting area, the green indicates the classroom, blue indicates bathroom, the red indicates the storage room, blue indicates the restroom, oh, sorry. Orange indic- oh, sorry, orange indicates the reception area. And tutoring center, um, it will include the following, well, sorry, this is the business operations plan, uh, tutoring center that will include the following activities, um, children will learn to code and gain skills in coding, robotics, and problem solving, uh, as for staff, there are two to three sensei per one hour session, and one manager, and a sensei is the teacher, as for clients, there are a maximum of fifteen students in the classroom per hour, and programs are for kids ages five to fourteen, business hours are Monday through Friday from one thirty PM to six PM, and Saturday from ten thirty AM to six PM. Planning staff recommends adopting resolution number twenty-three dash sixty-one twenty, approving conditional use permit number twenty-two dash zero eight. This concludes the presentation, I'm available for any questions, the applicant is also here if you have any questions for them.
Any questions for staff at this juncture?
Not at this time.
Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and let's hear testimony from the applicant, I believe that is Manhan So, and I hope I didn't mispronounce your name, please come forward. Evening.
Um, so my name is Calvin, this is, uh, he also goes by Andrew So, and I also have my business partner Wei Man Wu and, uh, Jason Chow. So we're trying to So, we're trying to start a Code Ninja in West Covina. We actually looked at a lot of different franchise, but Code Ninja is one of the fastest-growing franchise when it comes to coding, and they have a lot of different locations in United States, U.K., and Canada. And one of the main reasons why we want to teach coding is that I think coding benefits a lot when it comes to problem-solving, logic, and critical thinking. In fact, my kids are actually in that program right now, and that's one of the primary reasons why I want to start my own. I'm an engineer myself, too, and I know the benefit of coding. And Code Ninja actually provides a lot of very structured and coding material, so it's very easy for kids even as young as, you know, five or six, to really learn coding without truly knowing that they're learning coding. It's really amazing what they do. So, I think, you know, this opportunity will be, you know, very beneficial to the kids in the area and also very beneficial to West Covina. They have a very standardized framework in terms of selecting the materials, the laptops, the equipment, everything is to the highest safety standards, everything is fireproof. It's just, it's a really well-thought-out program, and I hope I can get approval from, you know, each of you guys and move forward with this.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have a question. The plans that were in my packet actually did not show the labeling of the different rooms, so I'm glad that staff was able to call that out. But still, I wanted to kind of understand, how is your physical setup going to be?
Ah, sure, yeah. So, if we can go back to that, yeah, you got the reception area, you go in, and there're basically desks and laptops, and the kids would go in, they would select a station, and the sensei, the teachers, would basically be supporting each of the individual throughout that area.
And so, the number of tables or desks, do you know how many you'll have for the given area?
Yeah. We'll actually, in the green area, we'll have at least 20 to 30 tables, so that the students can have enough rooms, because the tables are merely functional, like, we can have, like, little different activities, like a Christmas party, robotics. But each section, we're estimating about like 15 to 20 students per hour. And our goal is to get 50 enrollments in the very beginning of the business grand opening. So, the class ratio will be one to five, so each sensei, like, the teachers, the instructors, will handle five students.
Do you know what the occupancy limits are going to be for the building? That the fire department, or?
I checked with the department, coding, and I'm an architect, it can go up to 50.
Oh, would that be 50 maximum?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Hang?
I just have a question regarding the target age group that you guys are planning to teach, it's computer language. What type of language are you?
Yeah, so, it depends on the age. You can start with Java, and then probably something like Minecraft programming or Roblox, and then after that, it gets a little bit more complicated, and it's Python. And there are also other subprograms that you can take. You can do, you know, 3D printing program, G codes, you know, stuff like that.
I want to add to that, for five, at the age of five to seven, we're starting with Scratch.
My kids are a little bit older than that, so I forgot about that.
Do you have any other centers that have those programs?
Us personally, no, we don't, yeah.
But this?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. My kids are currently going to the one in Chinook Hills.
So, there isn't any other center like that in this area, is what you're saying?
No, yeah, that's why I think it's beneficial, because coding is going to be the future, at least when it comes to engineering.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I guess I'll ask the same question as the last applicant. Did you have a chance to read the conditions of approval?
Yes.
And you also are aware that staff has the same standard condition, talking about that they would monitor the parking?
Yes.
And so, you guys are, you understand and you agree to those conditions? Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead and move on to hear testimony from those in favor. Anyone? All right, seeing none, we'll hear now from those who are opposed. Seeing none. All right, anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will open discussion by the commission. Commissioner Hang?
I don't have anything to add, but I find that it's quite interesting. This would be the first, I think, in West Covina for coding, so we get a lot of tutoring center recently. Very interesting, and welcome.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion.
I'll second your motion to approve, or?
Your motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right, motion by Commissioner Becerra, second by Commissioner Hang. Joanne, roll call.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And this action is final, and let's appeal to the city council within 10 days.
I have one comment.
On this item?
On a prior item, I'm afraid. Just wanted to amend my vote from the last, from a non-hearing item, to a yes. I did my research, and I found out that the former, first mayor of the city of West Carolina was actually one of, also one of the founders of our local school, first schools in our city, and one of the founders of the first local church in our city. So, therefore, I did my homework, and I would like to amend my vote to a yes.
Okay, moving on to Administrative Use Permit Number 22-14, and I just want to double-check and make sure that this is right in my script. Okay. All right. Go ahead and go to Joanne. Who will present the staff report on this?
Planning associate Miriam Machado will present the staff report.
Good evening. This is item number four for Administrative Use Permit 2214 and Subcommittee Design Review 22124. The subject site is located on 345 South Grand Avenue. The property is zoned residential, single-family, and it's located in Area District 3. The lot size is 22,196 square feet, and the surrounding uses are single-family residential homes. There are three entitlements being requested. The first is Administrative Use Permit Number 22-14, because the proposed residence will be two stories. The second is Subcommittee Design Review Number 22124, because the proposed residence will have a second-story deck or balcony. And the third is Second Unit Review Number 22129, because the proposal also includes a proposed accessory dwelling unit. However, this entitlement is not within the planning commission's purview. For the site plan, the driveway, it comes off of South Grand Avenue. The main residence is shown here in blue. The residence would have a 50-foot front setback, a 37-foot rear setback, 30-foot right-side setback, and a 16-foot eight-end setback. In orange is the location of two proposed open patios, and in green is the proposed accessory dwelling unit. For the floor plan, shown here is the first floor. The first floor would have the entrance facing the south elevation. In purple is the attached two-car garage. Red is a library. Green is the kitchen. Orange is the great room or living room. Blue is one of the total bedrooms, and in yellow is two bathrooms. On to the second floor, there will be three more bedrooms totaling in four, and two bathrooms totaling in three. On the second floor would also be the access to the proposed deck, shown here in pink. Here we have the front and rear elevations of the proposed residence. The highest point of the elevation for the new structure would be at 21 feet in height. This is the left and right, or west and east, elevations of the proposed residence. And here we have a rendering of the proposed home, which shows the modern architecture design proposed. And here's another view of that same rendering. The subject parcel shown here in red would have a floor area ratio of 14%, which is generally consistent with the neighboring vicinity. Within the same vicinity, there are six other parcels, shown by the little stars there, that have a higher floor area ratio of 20% or above in comparison to the 14% proposed. Planning staff did receive six requests for a public hearing. Some of the comments received were regarding privacy concerns, property value, and the potential of the residents blocking their view. In order to assist the concerns, the applicant did install story poles in order to provide a visualization of the proposed residence. Here are some photographs of those story poles that were installed from the site itself. Here we have photographs of the story poles from the north neighbor, who did allow us to go on-site to take some photographs, so they're shown here. Here's some photographs from the south neighbor, and photographs from the west neighbor as well. With that, due to the proposal being in compliance with the zoning code, planning staff does recommend adopting the Resolution Number 236121 to approve Administrative Use Permit 2214 and Subcommittee Design Review 22124. I am here for questions. The applicant is here as well.
All right, does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
Chair, if I may, I just wanted to clarify that the second unit review is not an entitlement. It is, ADUs are required to be approved ministerially and are allowed by right per state law. So, that is the reason why Miriam had stated that it is not within the planning commission's purview.
Understood. Does anyone have any questions for staff at this juncture? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll hear from the applicant. Is Casey Wong here?
Good evening. My name is Casey Fong. I'm the architect for the project, representing the owner, who's not present today. We have been working with planning staff on development of the project, and basically, they have given us guidance to make sure that the project is conforming with the surroundings as much as possible, and also, with the recommendation, we built this markup. Planning staffs call it the, what do you call that?
The story poles?
The story, the story pole, I'm sorry. I call it the markup. Also, in addition, we did a quick section of the site, especially running north and south, which is the one in the bottom. As you can, as you can see, as you can see, the section through there, and with our height, trying to minimize the height as much as possible, and also, being a flat-roof building, our goal is to, not to incur any issues with the neighbors, especially the neighbor to the south of us. So, the planning staff has pretty much described our project in detail, and also, the fact that the project is in compliance with the city ordinances. So, I don't have any more to add.
Any questions for the applicant at this juncture?
To the south is elevated, so you wouldn't be obstructing any views, would you? To the south?
I'm sorry?
To the south of the home, it's elevated, so would you be, you wouldn't be obstructing any views?
The one on the south, the property to our south is much higher than our lot. The two neighbors on the east and the west are about the same, and obviously, the one to the north is a little bit lower.
East probably, you know, you're separated by a large street, so that shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, there is separation. If you look at the, if you look at the site plan, can you flip back to the site plan? Yeah, as you can see, there is 37 feet to the property line, and then there is another, I don't know, 10, 15 feet to the existing building.
Any other questions for the applicant right now? All right. Thank you. All right.
Chair, if I may, if I may ask the applicant to show, because there are neighbors here, they didn't see what the commission saw regarding your drawing.
All right, so now we'll hear testimony from anyone in favor. All right. I don't think I have any speaker cards in favor. All right, moving on to testimony from those opposed. First up is going to be, I believe, Richard Klein. Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Richard Klein. My property is on that diagonal that shows the arrow of 37 feet, and I have been in that lot and looked at their markup of elevation, and that lower corner is nine feet away from my property. So, they have marked off that's my property. They marked off, as you saw in the picture, those elevations and the corners of where the property is supposed to be, the house is supposed to be sitting, and it's not 37 feet, it's nine feet. Secondly, there is no two-story buildings in any of the neighbors around this property. This will be the only two-story building. And third of all, the grading, right now, I don't know if they're going to grade to a level, and if they do, they're going to have to bring in dirt, which would raise the property height even higher, because right now, my property, this property is a little bit lower than my property, so I don't know how they're going to do that. But I'm saying, if they do build a level house, then they will have to bring in dirt, and then everything will be raised up as much as maybe even five feet. So, it could be 21 feet plus five feet. So, we're talking about a major structure that's blocking our view, that is closer to our house, and I think that shows. And I think that, and the grading, I think those are all issues that I have as a neighbor. It's one of the, and I'm at the back end of the property.
So, are you?
And the guest house in the corner will be also next to my property, and even though it is allowed, it's just four feet, again, four feet from my property line.
So, question, is it a case that where the actual house is, it's flat, but the setback, which they identify as 37, are you saying that's sloped?
I'm saying the whole property is sloped. So, I don't know what their elevation is, if they're going to build it on a level ground, and if they do, they have to bring in dirt. If their house is going to be sloped? If their, if their house is going to be sloped, then I need, we need to really know that. And I guess the thing that's most important is it looks like it's 37 feet away from my property line, which would be great, but the mock-up that's out there right now, I went out with a tape measure, and if you look at the pictures, I have like a dish, a dish for the satellite, and the satellite dish is right there. The corner to the left right there is only seven feet from my wall. So I don't know where you get, they get 37 feet. So those are my issues.
Is that the, is that the ADU mock-up, Joanne?
I think that's the main house. The ADU is not mocked up, I don't think.
Yeah, because it's not something.
That's the main, that's the main residence.
Okay.
So that's my wall. Site plan?
The one that shows other houses around it?
Yeah, 37 feet is not correct. This house is not 37 feet from that wall, short wall that I have. At least the way it's not marked off on those poles. I mean, if they want to move it to 37 feet, make it one story, that'd be fine with me.
Miriam, do you have any information on that? That's, that's the north, I guess it'd be the northwest corner, is that correct?
North for sure. Sure, north.
Northwest.
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 So I'm.
With the pool.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, because based upon the site plan that was shown, the northwest corner appears to be where the ADU is located. Is that correct?
The ADU is here.
That would be the northwest corner, right?
So his closest, the closest to him would be this corner here. His property would be this property line here.
Yeah, that's his property.
Okay. All right.
I guess the question is, when they put up the story pole, was survey done? If surveys are done, then they can pull off from there?
It's all I know is, they put those poles up, I guess, to show the planning commissioner of the city, and it's only seven feet. Bottom right hand, the bottom piece of the, of the house, the bottom right, is only seven feet, nine feet from my property line.
So what you're saying is the pictures, the photos are actually incorrect?
I'm saying, I'm saying that the plan that showed that it was 37 feet is not correct.
But are the photos correct? I just want to say, if we can see a better picture of them, maybe we can see, you know, I can't tell from the pictures what the distance is. Can you?
Well, Mr. Klein, do you?
If you look at the dish and you look to the left, that pole is not 37 feet from that dish.
Right. So I want to get some clarification from staff here, because I think this is, this is the problem. Based upon my understanding of that site, it looks like, it looks like those, those poles there would have to be the ADU. Otherwise, those poles are completely unrepresentative of what we're seeing on the site plan. Miriam?
I believe there's 10 poles, yes.
Okay. And are, and of those 10 poles, were those, were those, were those poles that are identified by Mr. Klein here, are those, are those indicative of the ADU or are those indicative of the, of the single-family residence that's being proposed?
The story poles are for the main residence and the deck, so not, none of them are for the ADU that is proposed.
Okay.
Okay, so the, so the story poles also include where the deck is going to extend out?
Yes.
Okay, so that could be.
That could be, yeah, that.
Can you clarify?
Closer, but not.
So the deck area, is that that little, the smaller orange rectangular?
No, those are two patio covers. The deck would be where, I don't know if my mouse is on here, but top of.
The deck would be the south, that'd be the southwest corner.
But that wouldn't be his.
I think the story poles don't. Do we see the story pole pictures? Because if he lives on the northwest corner or toward the northwest corner, that can't be.
Right there. Look at the dish and you look to the left, that pole, you can see that from my wall, that is no way is that 37 feet. You can't see the, you can't, on this, even the picture on the right, you cannot see.
Where's this picture from?
No, this is from Mr. Klein's property on the north side.
And the right-hand picture is the same thing, a little bit farther over, but the unit, this AD unit is even farther to the right. You cannot see it. I'm only, I'm not even talking about that. I'm just talking about the main house, two stories, the grading, and it's not 37 feet.
Understood. Thank you. All right. If we can, and this would be a consensus request here, if we can call the applicant back up to explain, because I, I have to say honestly, I'm very confused as to, as to those, those story poles relative to Mr. Klein's property. If you can come back up. Mr. Fong?
But before Mr. Fong comes back up, Joanne, can you help explain, because the front setback is 50 feet, it seems like, and since the backyard is very slanted, how do you, what is the backyard setback? I guess, which dimension do you guys use?
Okay, so, so when, when the setback is measured straight on like this, it's at 37 feet. However, if it's measured, I guess, at a, at the closest point, slanted, I guess, it measures approx, I use a scale, it measures approximately around 20, 25.
So is it?
When it's scaled on the plans.
So is it flat or is it actually a slope? Is there actually a slope? Because I know the house is going to be on a flat surface, but from the corner to that point, is that actually a sloped area?
It's a, I guess it's a gradual slope, but usually setbacks are measured straight on. It's not measured along the slope.
Okay, so it would be a case that we would have to physically go out there to actually be able to understand the conditions that are there?
Yes.
Well, it's too dark to do it now, but.
All right. Mr. Fong, perhaps you can enlighten us, because I, I'll say for me, and maybe the rest of my fellow commissioners are following a little better than I am, but I don't quite understand, locationally, what, what is the, the story pole that is closest to Mr. Klein's property that he's indicated is somewhere between seven and nine feet away from his property line? So is that, is that right there, the northwest corner right there, or is that further to the south?
Well, first of all, we did have a story pole plan with dimensions. And we shared that with planning staff. I don't know, Miriam, if you have a copy of that story pole?
Plan? I think I have it with me.
That has the dimension. That, that plan directs the contractor to install the story pole.
Sure, but I'll just ask a very direct question here. With regard to, with regard to what that is on the, on the left-hand side, the left-hand picture, is that, is that the ADU or is that the house?
No, the ADU does not have any story pole to represent that.
Understood, okay. And so what is, and is that to represent the house then? To clarify.
Right. Again, Miriam, you don't have that plan?
I don't have it on me, no.
Miriam, question, based on the photograph, see how they have the one pole that's going straight up and down? Is that actually supposed to represent the wall of the house?
The story poles would represent the overall layout, so the two higher poles are supposed to represent the back wall.
The back wall of the house, okay.
The story pole was following the direction of the, of the plan, and so I can say that the poles are truly the location of the corners of the main residence.
Residence?
Right.
Okay, so then the question is, the poles, the pole that is just propping that up, that doesn't, that would not?
You're talking about the pole in an angle?
Yes.
No, no, no.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Just to support the pole from falling down.
So can you point it again to the wall, the story pole, so the one that's going up and down? Those are basically the, the corner of the house?
Back corners of the house.
Well, let's, I appreciate it, but Mr. Fong, can you answer that question? Because I want to make sure that I have a clear understanding and so do the rest of my commissioners.
I don't have a pointer, but are you referring to?
Can you point?
You referring to this pole right here?
Yes.
Yes.
This is the northeast corner of the building, of the building. Again, can you flip to the floor plan or site plan? Is this corner right here?
Could you point to the site plan, please? Site, there you go. So it would be right there.
So what, the story pole, what we did was, we installed over 20 feet long, oh, some are 21, some are 22, I believe. The corner of the poles are located here, 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 and then here at the front entrance. I'm sorry? Those pictures are. I'm sorry? Those pictures are. I think we're seeing all sticks.
The pole, the pole picture?
Sticks you put in for that, the main house.
It's not the ADUs for the main house, is what he's explaining. We'd probably have to physically go out there to see.
All poles that we did was located right here, 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 at about 20, 20 feet. And then at the entrance, they up to about 21, 22 feet because of the main entrance. Then the lower poles, we put, well, we didn't put one here, we put one right here, here and here. Something we put one right here. So that represents the deck.
But the picture, the picture demonstrates a corner area, and the only corner area I see on this, on this map or site plan is a ADU location.
There's no ADU here, so just clarify.
So, but what he put this, what he put?
Mr. Fong, if you can explain this to us clearly, because from the picture's perspective and the site plan, what we're looking at right now, point it to the corner where the diagonal, the slanted property line, the story pole. Can you point it to that corner, please? That corner right there? And let's go back to the picture. Please point it to the corner. So we're, go back to the site plan, please. Okay, so point to that corner. So that is a corner, and I, and then when we're going back to the picture, which is taken from a different perspective, let's point to that, that wall, that wall that you just pointed to right now. So can you please turn to the picture earlier? That one? So pointed, which wall is that? Which? Correct, correct. So, so which wall did you point to earlier at the site plan? Can you point it to us? The story pole?
I didn't take these pictures.
Yeah, still can't.
I think, I think this, this wall is on our east property line.
See, because it goes at an angle, but it's not the.
This corner of our, of our residence.
We're going to have to go out there.
The poles are here.
No. See, because this is at an angle, it's over here, so the photograph isn't the full.
The green, yeah. Green line, the green line on the top. There's like a green line.
This is nine feet from my property line, which if you go back to there, right, it matches up to this corner right here. And that is right there, we're almost nine feet.
Okay, so it seems like we're.
My property line right here. And I'm not even talking about this at all.
Right.
I'm talking about this corner, how close it is to my wall, it's not indicative. Also, again, iterating, this right here is at least 21 feet now, if it's rated higher, it's going to work.
And maybe you said, maybe you said this already, but what part, what area of the, the picture with the sticks, what area does that resemble?
The main house, where the new main house is going to go.
Where was it taken from?
Well, he didn't take the pictures.
I know, but what do you think from your, since you live around the area?
Can you point to the locations of where the picture, from the perspective of the pictures? Can you point to the?
This way or at an angle? Was it taken this way or at the angle?
Where would you think that, at your property, that you were taking the picture toward the story pole?
Yes, okay.
So it's, it's there, looking at, it's right there.
This is that, this is that.
That area.
And it's looking that way.
Are the story poles still in place?
The, the story poles are still in place, yes.
Because you know, from, because the street is, says no trespass, and even going over to the Ark Ridge street side, you can't see the story poles.
You can't.
So it's kind of a case, I would physically need to go there to the site to be able to actually see the story poles and to see the other homes that surround the area.
Is that setback in the front, is that code or can they move the prop, the house?
They, they have to meet the fire department's turnaround for a fire engine, so that's why they have the 50-foot setback, because they're more than 500 feet from grand.
Got it. Asking.
But the setback for that area, is that 20 feet or 25 feet, Joanne?
All right, so, thank you for now. We'll, we'll call you back up for rebuttal. All right, let's move on to Linda Klein next, and then on deck will be Arcelia Diaz.
My name is Linda Mae Klein, and I am the wife of the gentleman that just left, Richard Klein. What we're upset about is the neighbors, is when we first spoke to the owner, I forgot his name, I'm sorry, but it was supposed to be one story. So we didn't have any objection to one story. But when we saw the plans, my husband went down and looked at the plans, and so did one of the other neighbors or two, and we realized it was two-story, and it was like everything was crammed into one little lot. Hi, anything you could put in was put in, the little. High, anything you could put in was put in, the little grandmother house, I don't know what you call those things, ADU, is that the right term? That was there, and I know that's, you said you're not dealing with that, but that was there, there. It's just like a little village was put on this lot. I, it's a lot, gonna block out the light, it's gonna be just a noisy place that we definitely don't want. And we don't know how to, if he could just get it back to one-story, that would be great. We wouldn't have any objection. But he's trying to put too much on one lot. It's like you're trying to put a, an office building on that lot. You can't do that, it's not enough room. So I'm really here to protest that part. But when we actually saw this, I don't know what you call those things, the sticks up, we realized what a disaster that would be. And I don't know if you all want to come out and look at it. The only thing that would possibly, excuse me, that would possibly save it if we could put a higher fence, and he could take off that deck so that he's not looking into our property. And then we could plant like high bushes, let them just grow like 10 feet. That, I mean, I'm just trying to think of what you could do to alleviate that issue of privacy. We live on the top of a hill that, we live there because we like privacy, so does everyone in this, the little community that we have. And all of a sudden, we don't have privacy anymore. To find our, we never get pizza delivered because no one can find our house. It's up a little road, I, I invite you to come up, I'll even give you lemonade. Come up to the top, and you, it's, you're alone. And I like it that way. So we don't have any deliveries. Okay, but, sorry. But anyway, that's my position on this. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Arcelia Diaz, and next up is going to be Chris Haddow. Arcelia Diaz?
Chris Haddow, you guys?
Is, is Ms. Diaz going to speak?
So I'm gonna keep her, she has to talk.
Okay. Hold on, Ms. Diaz, do you, do you still want to speak? Sure, that, that's fine. All right, Mr. Haddow?
Yes. I'm, I represent the property, it's on the west side of that property, which the ADU is gonna be right up against, my mother's property. I want you, I want you to listen very carefully what I prepared here. What we're, what we're facing here, and I think, lady, just, invasion of privacy, we've enjoyed our family being, growing up there, and my, my parents purchased this property in 1964 because of the privacy, the exclusivity of the property. With a two-story house being built of this magnitude, and I was out and I took pictures of the poles myself and presented those to Miriam this morning via email, it's gonna, it's gonna basically destroy that privacy. The privacy everybody here has enjoyed. Lack of consideration of the community context and use of this land, and the placement of that house, it's, it's atrocious. Lack of consideration of a cooperative and collaborative planning process with the neighbors, that hasn't happened. Placement of the building is a blatant encroachment. Plans do not conform with the existing architecture, that's if it remains at a two-story house, does not conform to the architecture in that area. Again, it was originally a one-story house. Disrespectful actions toward my 91-year-old mother who's still living on this property. Tranquility has been breached. They all, everyone lives here because of the tranquility of this property, how it's nice and quiet, and everybody enjoys that tranquility. I enjoyed it growing up. This will disappear forever. If the plan's proposed to move and build, wonderful private, the privacy has been enjoyed by my family since 1964, we marred by an adjoining and encroaching towering building estimated to be approximately 22 feet at the highest level, which will face our pool yard and the bedrooms, and now at, 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 the ADU especially, at that portion of the property, we'll be staring at that. It's unacceptable. Even a single-story housing plan, which originally was approved, potentially does not appear to have adequately addressed the house in that context of the home surrounding it. Too much on, too much on too little piece of, little piece of property. There's plenty of land to build a house away from the, from our fence line, and by the way, that's 16 feet at the end, it, it's not 16 feet. With this gentleman here, like saying, he has nine feet, it's closer to maybe five feet. The ADU will be right up against the wall. So those, those, those mockups are incorrect. From the photos you can see in the layout, the placement of the property, the house is, it's settled down, it's not the highest and the best use of the property, I understand the fire issues, they should think again on redesign the property. From the photos you can see at the layout, the placement of the house is encroachment on that, on that land, that side. Some considerations should be given to placing the home away from that shared fence, from the, away from that area where it's at now, and backyard landscaping should be there versus ADU. In closing, surely the council understands that the plans and possibly deceptive tactics that were used here are not acceptable to the immediate community. It is, it is a, it's regretful that this future potential occupants, and potentially the planners, did not consider a collaborative and cooperative planning process in mature, within a mature community. Everybody's been, my, no, again, my parents been there since 1964, I grew up in this house, these people are still there, too. Regretfully today, the lack of cooperation, again, again, it's, no, lack of cooperation and collaboration process with a mature community, regretfully today, the lack of cooperation and collaboration has already led to excavating, removal of bushes, mature trees that provided privacy and also a great view. There used to be some wonderful eucalyptus trees down in the lower part of that property, now gone completely. Beautiful. So we basically appeal, you know, we basically, I'm, I'm, we're basically reaching out to you to, no, again, they own the property, it's, it's obviously their property's gonna be built, it cannot be two stories. That'll just be, that'll just be atrocious. And I'm just, I'm trying to appeal on the emotional level, because that's just, it's a complete disruption of not only my, my folks, my mom, but everyone else in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Arcelia Diaz, and next up will be Joe Torcias.
Well, we're, my property is to the, the south of the opposite from the property of the couple that came before me. We're a little bit elevated, we have a, you know, we're, we have a slope that goes into that property. So we have a really nice view right now of West Covina. We could see the IKEA buildings, the mountains, and so when we heard that they were gonna build a house, a one-story house, we were okay with that. But with a two-story house, we feel it's gonna obstruct our view. And it's also, it doesn't, it doesn't go well with the rest of the homes that are below us, because they're all single-story homes. And so that's why I oppose to this, because we feel we're gonna lose our view, which is the reason why we bought this property like 18, 18, 20 years ago. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, next up is Joe Torcias, followed by Norman Schultheis, I think. I hope I'm not butchering that too badly.
You're pretty good. My name is Joe Torcias, and so that was my wife, and that's our property from that view there, that's what we see from our pool deck, right? So we moved there in, I don't know, 2000, we've been there 20-something years, we've always enjoyed that view. I mean, Miriam came over today, we've allowed her to come and take some pictures, she got a chance to come in and stand on our deck, and even, you know, we have a, a nice patio there. As I was explaining to her, I mean, we, I think I must have, every room that faces that house, that property, from my dining room, my kitchen, my bar, my living room, my laundry room, and even my garage, everything faces that way. And I, when we went in there, we put in beautiful big windows so that, you know, the wife could, you know, we can all see the view. And, and in fact, on our deck, I have a, a workout area there where we have our treadmill and our ellipticals and bikes and everything facing that area, the morning you come out, it's nice, you got, you know, snow cap mountains and everything. And so, can I see that, because I want to point something out just on the picture?
It is at the green, yes.
So, so my, my concern is, you know, when, when they were gonna do the one-story house, we were, we were fine with that. I mean, in fact, that was very hospitable when he came over to introduce himself to me, I allowed him to put this green tarp here, and actually extend this, this fence. This fence was originally just to about here, and so I allowed him to put it higher. And then I actually went around and took him to all the neighboring houses to, to introduce him, right? Hey, welcome to the neighborhood, you know, we, we're neighborly, you know? And, and then in the 11th hour, he comes with this two-story proposal, and it was like, whoa, you know, what, two stories, you know, and, and then I asked him, well, where, where is the grading gonna start? I go, because this comes down here, and, you know, if, if he were to do what this guy did here, you know, I don't know if you know, but there's a huge house over here on this side, it's a one-story, it's a one-story home, but this guy had, you know, truckloads and truckloads of dirt that came in, and he raised the, the level. And if you can kind of see, if you look real close right here, this, this wall here, if you look at the, like, the middle of it, you actually see some water stains. Water stains on it, you can probably see it better on that one, but you could see the water stain there, and that's because that's where his level is, right? He's got, that's where, so if you're standing on the other side, your feet are gonna be right here, right? So what's to stop him for you guys, let's say if you guys were to approve a two-story building, and then he does what this guy did, so, you know, hey, I'm gonna ship in tons of dirt here, and I'm gonna raise this level, I'll put a bigger wall here, and we'll raise the, the, the grading level to here, and we'll start our 22 feet or whatever he's allowed to do from this point going up, well, he'll just devastate our view, right? And when I asked Miriam, I go, well, where, when is that determined? She says, well, that's determined way after the approval is even done, because that comes in when engineering gets involved, and, you know, I said, well, that's kind of like the cart before the horse, right? I mean, I think we should already understand where grading level should be, and not allow him to encroach on what all the other homes' ridge lines are, right? So if you stand in my yard, you'll see that, even, even though this guy raised his elevation to be, to build his one-story home, the top of his roof is, I mean, it's almost perfect with this one, with Mr. Klein's and Mrs. Klein's home. And as you circle around over here, Dolores, you know, and, and all the other homes, they're all, you could basically put a level right there. And so again, so then I, you know, common sense tells me that if he were to even raise it just slightly, and if he were to go two stories high, well, I'm assuming if you were to add an, if, if Mr. Campagnas, who owns this property here, and he's against it, too, by the way, he just, you know, the guy's a busy guy, he couldn't make it today, but I talk to him just about every other week, if you were to put another story on top of his house, well, you might as well put it on top of the Klein's, because imagine if, if he raised it to this level and he put a second story, it would be up here. I, I would lose, we would lose all this sight right here of, well, here, wherever it's at. And so that, that was the, that, that's the concern there. No, no concerns with one-story at all. And, you know, so that, that's really all I, I have to say. I mean, I, you know, I'm not against someone coming in and wanting to build their dream home there, but, I mean, if, if you want to do what, what everybody else has, it's a one-story home. I mean, what, the original plan was to do, I think, 2,500 square feet, if I'm not mistaken, Miriam, right? It was, the original was about, proposal was around 2,500, and then he went to the two-story, which I think takes it to about 3,000 or so. So that extra 500 feet that he wants to get on the second story, why, why not put it over here off to the side? Keep it one-story, he could still probably get his 3,000-square-foot house in there. I mean, you know, and, and I think he would be happy, everybody would be happy. I mean, at the end of the day, right, I mean, we just all want to get along. I mean, that's pretty much, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next up is Norman Schultheis, followed by Dolores Haddow.
I'm not gonna repeat everything that everybody else has already said. The only other thing that I have here that wasn't already mentioned was that deck, that open deck on the second floor, that is, has no other view than into our backyards and into our bedroom windows of both Joe's, mine, the neighbor that would be on the west side. That deck, yeah, Dolores, that, that deck does nothing, has no other view, the mountains are on the other side. So everything else that's, that I wrote down here has already been mentioned, so no use just repeating it. Nice.
Thank you. Next up is Dolores Haddow, followed by, hold on, I have two more cards, Phil Arzola.
I have lived in this location for 60 years. The first person who spoke was one-year-old when we moved in. Now you are, this is addressed to the people who have bought the property. Now you are planning to build a home without any thought of how your plans will affect those who are already living there. I want you to think about what you were about to do. You bought the property because it afforded so much privacy and beauty, and now that privacy that we have enjoyed will be gone if you continue with your plan. If you continue with the project. I have some requests, that is to continue with privacy, that trees and shrubs be replaced. He removed all the trees, all the shrubs, everything that was there, it is just bare ground. The property across the way from me, I have never seen. I don't even, have never even met that person, they've been living there for over 30 years. They haven't met me because we had so much privacy. You need to think about how we can live out life, our lives comfortably in the secluded area. What you hope to enjoy will not become a reality but a disappointment to you and those around you. Please give some thought to what you are planning to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Phil Arzola, followed by Deborah Zaragosa.
My name is Phil Arzola. I live at 323 Grand, so I'm three houses north of this property. I'm here on a tangent, I, I know where they're coming from on privacy, because that house, I think it's built two-story or one, isn't gonna bother my privacy, because I'm too far away. My big concern right now is how they're gonna construct this house, and the safety that's gonna go along in building this house. If you go to the driveway that they have, that long, narrow, it looks like a batcave driveway, you know, going all the way down, that is a very difficult driveway to turn into. When they started building the, the curb, when they broke the curb to build the driveway like about a month or two ago, we had traffic backed up on Grand. You know, Grand is a through fair. Where my house is, people are hitting 40, because they gotta get up the hill so they can get to Mount Stack and go to school. There's a lot of concern right now from my standpoint. I've been living there for 16 years now, I know the Klein's, great people. The guy in back of me has been building for 12 years now. When he did his initial build of his house, he had 70 cement trucks park in my front yard and then go up the hill and dump their loads. I don't need that anymore. I really don't want the noise of 70 trucks again. He also had a helicopter take out some trees. The construction of this house is reminding me that this is all gonna happen again. That's my main concern, the noise, the cement trucks. What time do you really start? 7:00 AM is when they start, but the trucks start lining up at 6:00. lining up at 6:00 I work from home and I also work at Raytheon by the by the airport that building out there two days here two days here I need my rest but you know when I do work from home I start around 8:00 I don't need to wake up at 6:00 because I got cement trucks parked out in front of my yard and they're all gabbing throwing trash in my yard I don't need that there will be a traffic issue and we had fatalities on Grand about two months ago not because somebody was building a house because when people have to put up with traffic on Grand they get mad they get angry traffic builds up people start making three lanes instead of two you're not gonna be able to take a cement truck down that driveway 10 of them at one time and pour and pour and go and go modernization type home my fiance does homes like that she's an architect there's a lot of different things that have to be done specially on the site so there's a lot of extra construction there's a lot of other major things that are going on um I'm really worried about when they're gonna start building the house when they're gonna be done with the house are they gonna work on weekends are they gonna work on holidays I'd like to be able to enjoy July 4th in my backyard without hearing the guy behind me running a chainsaw those are my issues right now there's there and you know I don't like to point out problems without saying I got a solution there needs if there's gonna if this house is actually gonna be constructed there has to be some I don't know what you call them waivers or some rule changes to help put this house in because there's gonna be some safety issues I I really don't want there to be any fatalities planning is how construction is done I understand but it has to interact with the community and how things get done otherwise it doesn't mean anything my other last comment was um when people are building things we aren't able to get ahold of the city hall and say you've got a problem I'd like to know how I on Friday Saturday and Sunday no one's available do I call the cops am I gonna keep calling the cops on Monday on on Friday am I gonna call the cops on Saturday am I gonna call them on Sunday you know these guys are going before 7:00 they're here after 7:00 what am I supposed to do so I'm coming in at a tangent I realize these folks have some really big worries in terms of privacy I'm on the other side of the client so I'm okay on the privacy I'm really concerned about the construction and the safety of the people in the community that they are joining because we're a pretty good community you know we all get along the food that gets delivered to the clients I end up eating it but they pay for it thank you for your time you have a good night.
All right next up is Deborah Zaragosa and I believe that's our our last speaker.
Hi my name is Debra Zaragosa um so where the long part is right there in 2017 I bought that part of that property because I was planning on buying the part that um we're now speaking about now but I winded up buying another property um over the last couple of years I've been putting up for sell signs to sell that property and they're always removed so um I'm here because I own part of that and if they want to build there the single stories like the rest of the residents are requesting that they do they need to buy my part so I can be done with this um like I said I I keep putting up for sell signs they keep removing it um I have can you take that over there so they can see this is what the property that they talk about like the narrow part um used to look like prior to them grading it and it is a tight fit so um I would I would be kinda curious to also know how a cement truck um trucks period would be able to get down there because it is so tight.
Just to just clarify I don't mean to interrupt but this is this is your property?
Um can I use you?
Give her the pointer.
I'm gonna look up the zoning map.
The green one.
I'll be putting up the zoning map right now.
And while I'm doing that you can always always report complaints on the WestCuban app I know some of the speakers have addressed uh how they can make complaints so one of the greatest things our city has is an online app that you could get from the Apple Store or the Android Android Store it's a free app where you could make complaints about code enforcement complaints city services requests to cut city trees all kinds of stuff so just to put that out there.
So where she's going down the line um I own part of that property there and like I said I've put for sale signs up um for them to have to buy that part since they bought the other part um that's ignored and then they went ahead anyway and put up the um the driveway part and personally I feel like that if they're going to build there then they need to buy that part or to um own all of it.
How many?
Excuse me?
How wide is that part?
Um it's like um well it's it's because it's narrow it goes lengthwise so it's uh 15 1500 on my title.
Although I guess for the width.
It's approximately point 45 feet wide.
Oh it's 45 feet wide point four five oh got you.
It's half a foot wide?
Half a foot wide.
Yes a little bit less than six inches. It's in feet but okay but like I said when I first purchased this I was intending on buying the part.
The other part.
Yeah and I winded up buying another property so that's that's my thing. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you all right um now we'll rebuttal from the applicant um Mr. Fong.
Actually hearing the neighbors comment and concern I can see that they have enjoyed that free view all these years but but the property that the owner purchased is is a legal site that we can build and to be fair they uh they should be able to build something that meets their expectation and and also um meeting the city's requirement not only planning but also the fire department's requirement so uh at this point I'm leaving it up to the committee to decide how we should proceed on this project you know uh going one story is not possible you have a big site like that you only have maybe like 1,800 square feet that you can build because of all the setback requirements and uh so it's not fair to the owner uh but uh again I I understand that the neighbors concerned they they have enjoyed the sight of you all these years um and that's all I can say it's up to the committee to decide.
Thank you uh any further questions for the applicant?
Yes uh how many square feet how many square feet are on the top level?
Uh I I didn't measure it it.
On the second floor.
It's in the report it's in the report.
It should be about 700 square feet.
So you're saying there's 2,000 square feet on the bottom and 1,000 on top?
Right 2,000 and 1,000.
We have any any specs on this home? I mean my question is is there any so because of the setbacks there's no way that you can incorporate the top floor to the one?
No way.
You see anything?
dimensions.
They have the overall dimension.
I'm sorry if you look at A1 the first on the other right description you see some square footage.
Right it says the new residence is 3,000 square feet but he didn't break yeah I guess what they were looking for you're looking for them to show the first and second floors yeah it for the main house they're saying overall it's only gonna be 3,000 square feet.
That's what I saw but I was just wondering if it was to be could that 3,000 go into one floor or does it have to be a second story because what he's saying is the setbacks don't allow.
We bought a piece of land we feel 2,000 square feet is not fair to the owner.
Does it none of the sticks there in place represent the height right?
The story poles represent the height.
We're asking staff thank you.
The story poles installed are meant to represent the total height of the building which will be the.
So some of the and so uh and the question to the applicant and many city staff have confirmed this but so is this house being built on a slope then?
Um from from what I understand they they plan on grading down if the planning commission is if the if the planning commission is willing to approve the project um in order to ensure that you can include a condition of approval that requires the applicant to grade down um and provide a topographical map and survey to ensure that 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 the the grade of the building pad is is going to be at the lowest um I guess corner of the existing grade.
Hmm okay.
But you said that the story poles are still they're on the site.
Yes they're on the site.
Because it would probably to be honest it would probably be helpful for us to actually physically be able to go out there to really get an understanding because it sounds like not all of the property is flat and then for us to understand how they're gonna position the building and so that we make sure we understand what the views are gonna look like.
And I just wanna say there is from Joe's property to mine there is a.
We're we're now in we're now in commission discussion the public hearing's closed. All right go ahead.
That was.
Can I see the 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 picture the picture with the the sticks again measurements the blue tarp how about the one with the blue tarp has like a blue tarp on the gate or fence?
It um I'd like to add something it's really difficult to see the story pole from the pictures from different perspective and angles and I was wondering if we get permissions from the owner if he can go to the private lots and and take a look from there this is since this is a a flag shaped lot um with privacy issues and what have you we like if possible to go see it because we see from different perspective now I don't know if the story pole was built based on a survey or was it put up because some of the owners are saying four feet some are saying I don't even know what the setback is um so it's really difficult for us to make a decisions this particular evening so perhaps um instead of looking just at pictures and we're guessing what the dimensions are and since the story poles are still up there maybe perhaps we can all go out there and take a look and also from different perspective of each owner surrounding the area as well so if you can get those permission that'd be wonderful because that area is some area some of the homes are pretty heavily gated and no doorbells so.
Can I ask the staff I'm sorry why is there 16 foot eight inch setback on the west side and there's 30 feet uh foot setback on the east side I mean would that be able to be expanded that setback on the on the east side?
Please let us let us discuss please.
Um in terms of the location that would be dependent on the applicant if they would be willing to relocate it to I guess more to the or to the east.
But they're not restricted to have the 30 that 30 so they could go to a shorter setback correct?
Yes.
Okay thank you.
Can you clarify Joanne if the setback for the side which is the top portion would that the minimum setback is five feet and then the bottom portion does you have a clicker can you point it to that portion so the top portion right there so the minimum setback is it's it's five feet is that correct um Joanne?
No the um the for a second floor the minimum setback is 10 feet.
And for first floor?
First floor five.
It's a seven it's hold on. I believe it's five.
What area district is this?
Three.
Three.
It's it's five.
It's I believe five.
And then can you also click on the down uh the lower portion which is okay back to the setback so the lower portion that section right there um it's also five feet setback is that correct for one story and two story would be 10?
That's the minimum yes.
Okay and then the back portion if it's one story would that be a five feet setback?
Um the minimum setback for a one story at the rear is five feet however you would have to maintain a um 40 40% um rear yard lot coverage so yes they can for a single story they can go up to five feet from the rear property line.
For two-story how many uh what's the setback for the rear?
25 feet.
25 feet minimum and since this is a diagonal do you?
25 feet from here.
Okay a di- you take a diagonal as well?
Yes from the closest point.
Okay.
So there aren't restrictions that would keep them from converting the 3,000 square foot home to a one-story it's a 22,000 plus lot and a 3,000 square foot house doesn't seem like I mean also you see you have the garage that is in front you know then you have another setback to the house why can't the house be brought forward some for to keep the privacy to the homes in the back?
Um the the fire department requires this turnaround?
No I get it but if you see for the garages and then there's another I don't know how many square feet it is but then it goes back right there.
That is part of the fire apparatus road that's required by fire that would that to allow them there to allow for them the vehicle to turn.
But if you look. Just the 50 feet.
No they would have to go in and then back up okay.
So is there or is it not the restricted to you know for him to build a 3,000 square foot house is he restricted restricted to this floor plan with all the setbacks or is there room?
There might be there there might be room to expand this way and also this way and this way as well closer to the property line.
But that might ruin their views worse.
And have everything either on a one story or you know.
Mm-hmm can I see the picture with the that the blue tarp with the sticks? Because that gives us a better view of let's just say if it's blocking someone's height not the uh not the one that one I think yeah so it's not gonna block uh those sticks are not.
That would be from the property on on acreage.
So it's not blocking. Yeah it's not blocking they still have the view of the mountains or the trees.
And also um the maximum height of any house in in WestCuban is 25 feet.
This house is 22 feet correct?
I believe 21.
21.
So Joanne are you saying that even despite if they were to build a one-story they can actually reach 21 feet as I mean 25 feet maximum?
If it is sloped yes the city doesn't have a maximum height for a one-story.
The maximum heights would be even if it's one-story it would be 25 feet if if.
If they chose to design it that way with a steep high steep roof then yes but because the city does not have a ma- um a maximum height for a single story we only have a ma- maximum overall height of 25 feet.
Thank you.
So it would be a one-story with a really high roof and attic so. So it would be a one story with a really high roof and attic, so it, it would be like, I guess, a Tudor style house.
Yeah, would have vaulted ceilings if it's one story and 21.
I think the city attorney wanted to opine here.
Thank you, Chair. I, I do want to make sure the commission's aware, and I'm sure you are, but also the public, that this does come under the Housing Accountability Act, this project, and the state has significantly limited local authority when it comes to housing, I'm not sure the public is aware of that, one example being the commission's not considering the A D U because the state has taken that authority away from you guys. The Housing Accountability Act applies to the rest of this project, and that act basically says that a commission must approve housing projects if they comply with objective local standards. So it's an important discussion you're having, I just want to make sure you're aware that you're having in a context of whether this project complies with your local objective standards. If they do comply, you must approve it, if you want to deny the project, you do have to make finding that there is a, a threat to public health and safety, and it has to be backed up by substantial evidence. So you do have some leeway in there, I just want to make sure that you are in the right, having the right conversation. Thank you.
And a question for the city attorney, so that means we don't have authority to tell them to flatten the lot, then, because it's not in our ordinance, is, right? It's not within the code?
If it currently, if it complies with the code as it's currently written, and it's objective, you have to...
Exactly, yeah, okay.
Now, you, you've been talking about whether there's room to ask them to shift the project a little bit, and if, if they can do that, and it complies with the code, you may have some leeway, you can talk to the applicant about that. There is also a limit on the number of public hearings of housing projects, so, you know, even if we continue this, that's, that's one less public hearing, and that includes going to the council, so, just so you're aware.
Right. Yeah, I think...
I actually like to make a motion to continue this, so that we can actually take a look at the sites, and also the neighbors' areas, since some of our commissioners have not gotten a chance to go in, and since it's such an enclosed lot as well.
I think the city attorney just made a legal, the city attorney just made a legal analysis.
I'll just inquire, Mr. City Attorney, for our, our own edification here, how many public hearings are we limited to?
Four.
Okay.
And it includes appeals.
Understood, okay. So I think, based upon where we're at, we're probably okay if we, if we decide to continue this for, for consideration of the property in person, you know, obviously, I'll dovetail off of what the city attorney had to say, and I, you know, my, my biggest concern is, I, I see these, these types of lots, and right now, as a matter of right, you can split them in half, and we don't have anything to say about that. As a matter of fact, down, down the street, this was a project that was, that was already, that already came under our purview, and we had a lot just this size that was split in half, and it's unfortunate, certainly takes away from the character of the neighborhood, but these are the things that the people of the state of California have voted for, and we have to respect that. So I'll, I'll, I'll say this, I'm, I personally think that, based upon my own review of, of how the, the flag poles are, that were, that were set up, I have some serious questions as to whether or not that's a, an accurate representation of, of what I see on the, on the plans that I've been given, but I obviously have those concerns, given the fact that, also, excuse me, I have concerns about this, just given the fact that the state has significantly hamstrung our ability to make determinations like this. So with that, is there a motion?
I, I actually like to add to Commissioner Lewis...
Just a quick correction, I said four hearings, it's actually five hearings.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Even better.
I actually like to add to Commissioner Lewis' comments regarding the state taking up some of the rights from city, one of them is, if you, as a homeowner, if you want to check it out, since you're all here, is regarding the A D U ordinance, so if you check that out, and also regarding the lot split, I think it's S B...
Nine, I think.
Nine? So if you look up an S B nine, then that would be regarding the lot split, that any owner in California can do that, single residential. So I don't, please read up on those state ordinance or state law.
All right.
It's a law.
There's a number of other bills out there.
Correct, there's quite a few that was passed.
So I believe Commissioner Hang had a motion to continue this, so that we could go out and do a site visit, and then return as, I, I believe, as efficiently as possible for whatever the next hearing date is. Is there a second?
Do we have a second?
I'll make the second a motion.
All right, we have, any other discussion from the commission? Seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Hang, second by Commissioner Williams, Joanne, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify that the motion is to continue to a date certain, with September, would February 28th be okay? Applicant, would February 28th be okay with you?
Twenty?
Yes, of February.
Is that for a site visit?
No, that is for, for the next public hearing, the site visit would be in between those dates. Okay, so a date is certain of February 28th? And roll call, Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Can I add something to Joanne, if you could work with the homeowners to see if you can get permission through their gates as well, the one that want us to see from their backyard, side yard, or front yard?
Sure.
I think we have consensus on that.
Yeah, and then I'll just make a comment too, maybe, just encourage, I would just encourage the applicant to possibly get some input from the neighbors, and maybe that's adding more greenery around the, the walls, the wall areas, and so forth, and I will encourage the neighbors to understand the constraints the commission has in relation to state laws that are in place, and to, hopefully you guys can work together to come to common senses, that if you have to follow state law, then what else can be done, maybe it's adding more trees, or adding more greenery around the property, so, yeah.
Okay, to, I'm sorry, to clarify, I, if it is okay for planning staff to provide the planning commissioners with the contact information of, that we have of the neighbors, and also if it's okay for the planning commissioners to provide the contact information of the applicant, and when the planning commissioners do go out on the site, they can, there cannot be more than two commissioners at the same time, so also, please keep that in mind when you do schedule appointments.
I, I also want to make abundantly clear, at least from my standpoint as, as a commissioner, I am not asking the applicant to do anything above and beyond what the law requires. Moving on, to, to item number six, finding of conformance with the city, the city's general plan for vacation of an 1,801 square foot property located on the corner of Vincent Avenue and West Covina, and West Garvey Avenue North. Joanne, who will read the staff report?
I will be providing the staff report.
Okay.
The property to be vacated is a 1,000...
Excuse me, excuse me, everyone, if, I, I understand everyone probably wants to have a discussion, if you, if you can, make your way upstairs, we would appreciate it, so we can continue conducting the meeting. Have a good night, everyone. Joanne, whenever you're ready.
Okay. The property to be vacated is a 1,801 square feet, and is located on the corner of Vincent Avenue and West Garvey Avenue North, the red, the area highlighted in red. A zone change, general plan amendment, precise plan, and tentative track map was approved by the city council on July 20th, 2021, that allowed for the development of a 119 unit multifamily residential project at the former Vincent School site. The zone change and general plan amendment rezoned the property to Vincent Place specific plan, and changed land use designation to medium density residential. And this was part of the original packet that the planning commission and the city council reviewed, which clearly indicated that the city of West Covina to abandon approximately, and here it says 1,814 square feet of vacant land, but the city did a survey and it's 1,801 square foot. Prior to the vacation, a separate resolution with a finding of conformance with the city's general plan must be adopted by the planning commission and per state law. Here are the general plan policies and actions that is consistent with the proposed vacation. The vacation is necessary, is policy 3.3 and action 3.3, the vacation is necessary in order for the property to be integrated into, and maintained by the multifamily residential development. The subject property was previously used as part of the former school's grass field that was fenced in, into the school property. The subject property will be developed with landscaping and walkways for, for the multifamily residential development, and will be maintained by the homeowners' association. The proposed development of the subject property will enhance the aesthetics of Vincent Avenue and Garvey Avenue, the corner of Garvey Avenue and Vincent Avenue. Policy 5.1 and action 5.1, the vacation of the subject property will not have an impact on the local roadway system, because, again, the property was not previously used and is not being used for a street, bike lane, or pedestrian walkway or sidewalk. The subject property will be developed with landscaping for the multifamily development that the HOA will maintain. The multifamily residential development would include interconnected private streets and pedestrian walkways, and improvements to the public right of way as well. It is recommended the planning commission adopt resolution number 23-6122, to determine that the vacation is in conformance with the goals and policies of the West Covina general plan. The staff is available if the planning commission has any questions.
Any questions? I, I do have one question, with regard to the abandonment of this property, would it not be a, a better long-term planning move to, to grant the property to the homeowners' association and maintain some sort of easement in the event that we do need, we do need utility access or something along those lines in the future? That would be my only question and, and consideration that I, I would want to know if, if staff had, had given.
From my understanding, this, the city, the city engineering division has looked into the, the potential maintenance of the site, and had, had felt that the best use for the site would be to, to vacate the, the city-owned property, mainly because it was ne, it wasn't used, it was never used as a roadway, and it was, was, has, had always been maintained by the school, it was gated in, so that, that would, that would take any liability off from the city in the future.
Understood, but I, my, my question is, is maintaining some sort of easement for future use, in, in the event that the city ever needs it for some unknown purpose, perhaps, perhaps it's a, a broad easement right, something along those lines, has, has anything like that been considered? That's, that's my only question, is whether it had been considered at all.
I, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right.
So that area you're referring to, is that on the lottery?
Yes.
By vacating it, are we...
Do you mean the property for free?
To...
Yes.
To them?
Yes.
In exchange for...
399.
They had to pay for the, they had to pay the city in order to file to request for the vacation, correct?
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure regarding the logistics, that is at the city council level, this finding is necessary in order for, for the city council to actually make that decision, it would go to the city council at the next meeting.
All right, our, maybe a question for the city attorney, because this is public land, doesn't it have to go through a public bidding process? Can the city just give, give away a piece, a piece of property, just like that?
So because this is a vacation, it's essentially like an abandonment of an easement, so it's not an outright property interest. There is express statutory authorization to do that in certain circumstances, surplus land act doesn't apply because it's such a small portion, and it's typically not considered a gift of public funds, as long as the underlying project, which it is going towards, serves a public interest, and, and again, those are determinations that will be made by the council, that's before the commission is really just a determination, does this conform with the general plan in general?
Okay, any other questions? Any other questions?
You're asking us to do what tonight?
To determine that the vacation is consistent with the city's general plan.
Oh, okay. Any other questions?
I'll just say that, yeah, if we give this, if, if it is in compliance with the city's general plan, that, that they maintain the area like they're, they, like they were, like they were originally gonna, gonna do, and that there's an adequate amount of lightning, lights in that area, so it's not pure dark like it, like it has been for many years.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that the planning commission adopt resolution number 23-6122, determining that the vacation of the 1,801 square feet property located on the corner of Vincent Avenue and West Garvey Avenue North is in conformance with the goals and policies of the West Covina general plan.
And I'll second.
All right, Joanne, roll call, please, we have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
No. Motion passes 4-1. All right, moving on to commission reports, comments, miscellaneous items, does anyone have anything to report at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward to community development director's report, we don't have Paulina here, so, Joanne, do you have anything to report?
I will be filling in for Paulina in the community development director's report. As far as the forthcoming is concerned, or is that before? We will be, at the next meeting, we'll be having a study session for the development code update with our city's consultant, I believe, a few months ago, the city, when, when the city's consultant...
I believe a few months ago, the city, when the city's consultant presented the objective design standards, the planning commission requested a study session for the development code update. So that will occur at the next planning commission meeting. And now, the two-story house has also been added for the next meeting under public hearing. Today, I emailed the planning commissioners regarding the Planning Commissioners Academy, which will be held on March 29 through the 31st at Garden Grove. If the planning, if any of the planning commissioners is interested in attending the Planning Commissioners Academy, please let me know so I can go ahead and help you get registered. The city is going to cover the cost of the registration for the conference.
Anything else on that?
Yes, and the city will be having a centennial festival this weekend already, so I invite the public, I believe it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and the centennial dinner will be this coming Thursday.
Okay.
That's what everybody wants to know. They're keeping it really hushed. I've been asking them almost every day what food we're having, but we don't know. It's a surprise, that's what I keep on hearing.
What's the dress code?
Business.
Business attire.
All right. Any city council actions you'd like to report on?
Not, there have not been any planning-related city council actions at this time. However, the city council will be reviewing the planning commission recommended moratorium for drive-throughs at the next city council meeting on February 21. And also, they will also be considering the shopping cart containment ordinance that the planning commission had recommended for approval.
Since we have no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Happy Valentine's, everyone.